We'll start the meeting. Uh, roll call. How's your drink water?
Yeah.
How's your Elliot?
Here.
President, um, Mayor Leahy?
Yeah.
How's America?
Yeah.
How's the noon?
Yeah.
How's your rock?
Here.
How's the Sumerians?
Yeah.
How's the child?
Here.
How's the Conway? Eight present. Thank you. Uh, we have some memorials tonight. Counselor and Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber to a dear friend Leo J. Sheridan, beloved husband of the late Rita Lefaria Sheridan, with whom he shared sixty years of marriage in their home on Cosgrove Street. He was the fourth son of Allison Thomas Sheridan. He attended Sacred Heart Grammar School and was a graduate of Lowell High School, class of nineteen forty-four. He was a lifelong parishioner of the Sacred Heart Holy Family Parish. Leo dedicated his life to public service. At the age of eighteen, he joined the United States Navy and served during World War Two. Upon discharge, he began his service to the city of Lowell as a member of the Lowell Fire Department, uh, Police Department for seven years before moving on to the Lowell Fire Department, where he enjoyed a thirty-three-year career driving ladder to. He received commendations from both departments and was named firefighter of the year in nineteen eighty-two. In retirement, he continued his service to the city as the president of Lowell Retired Firefighters Association for more than a decade. Many knew Leo as the electro-lux man, as he enjoyed thirty years of successful employment in vacuum cleaner sales and service. He was always ready to provide demonstrations or take an order. Leo loved music, entertaining in Boston at Patton's Restaurant, singing as a duet with his great friend Omar Samad. That is probably where his son Leo Junior and his children got his love of music. Leo is survived by his four children and their spouses, Linda and Michael Gallagher, Leo Sheridan Junior and his wife Cheryl, Lisa and John Slattery and Deborah and William Gilligan. He was also the proud grandfather to nine grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. We offer our deepest condolences to his family, relatives, and many friends. I'd like to also offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber for Thomas S. Hebert, beloved husband of Patricia A. Soucy Hebert, who survives him and with whom he would have celebrated their forty-third wedding anniversary in April. Born in Lowell and attended Lowell Schools, and he was a graduate of Lowell High School class in nineteen seventy, where he was a member of the nineteen sixty-seven undefeated football team. Tom went on to graduate from Control Data Institute in Burlington. Prior to his retirement, Tom was a copier and printed technician with Xerox Corporation, where he worked for over thirty years. Besides his wife Patty, Thomas survived by his daughter Melissa and his son Matthew and many close friends, especially Leo and Cheryl Sher- uh, Sheridan. So I, my heart really goes out to the Sheridan family because they not only lost their father, they lost a very dear, close friend. We offer our sympathy to his family, relatives, and many friends. Today, we have reached a grim milestone that marks the death of five hundred thousand people from the COVID-nineteen virus. What started out as thirty-four deaths has reached the devastation figure of a half a million people who have died so far, greater than the number of those who died from World War One, World War Two, and Vietnam combined, like the chef, aged fifty-nine, the young mother, Fadi, the magician, fifty-seven, and the young video game enthusiast, aged nine years old. They lived and were loved. They will live in our hearts as well as all those who have died since our last city council meeting. May they rest in peace. They will be truly missed. Let us offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber to their memory. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other memorial tonight? Um, I just have one. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Gerald J. McCabe Senior. Gerald J. J. McCabe Senior of Florida, formerly of Lowell, died December thirteenth after a long courageous battle of cancer. Jerry was married to Karen Greenwood Flynn for twenty-four years. He was the son of the late Charles McCabe and Mary McCabe. He grew up in this acre section of Lowell on Broadway Street. He's a Lowell high graduate, class nineteen fifty-five, and then went on to the Air Force for four years and was a proud, a proud veteran. When Jerry returned home from the military, he became a Lowell police officer, encompassing all departments of, all departments of policy duty, patrolman, motorcycle duty, want, criminal bureau, and ended his career as an arson investigator in the city. Um, he reta- he attended Northeastern University and graduated with the great, degree in law enforcement. Besides his wife, he is survived by his son Gerald Junior of Florida, nephews Ed McCabe of Lowell and Bob Stonus of Barica, nieces Sandra, Sandra Conrad of Drake it and Jeannie Stonus of Barica. Um, he will be sadly missed. And a small side note, um, when Miko Kaufman was designing the Charles Russo's Memorial Statue at a JFK Center out here, uh, Jerry was picked the model of statue for Mr. Kaufman. It was a very, um, appropriate choice according to his, uh, law enforcement friends. So he'll be sadly missed and we'd like to offer a moment of silence for him and for all those who have passed away since our last meeting. Thank you. Mayor's business. Uh, communication, remote Zoom participation. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Sumeris, seconded by Counselor Chow. Um, two-two, like to do, uh, recognition. Uh, like to recognize the retirement of Nancy Sprenod and Diane Trad from the Department of Planning and Development. Uh, I just want to take a moment to thank, uh, these two great city employees who are retired from the Department of Planning and Development. Nancy, uh, the executive secretary for DPD will be retiring April second, and Diane Trad, Assistant City Manager, uh, is retiring at the end of this week. So I'd like to thank them on behalf of the city for their many, many years of service. Um, you have a lot of years and a lot of dedication to the city. Um, and we'll certainly miss both of you. We wish you all the best and congratulate you. Um, it's been kind of a tough week, so I do have citations. Um, I'd like to put them in a presented form for you, and I wasn't able to get them done, but, um, we will get them to you uh, at a later date and present them to you. Um, but the city council, the entire city council would like to thank you for your many years of service and, uh, wish you all the best. So, thank you very much, and I don't know if everybody can turn their mics on, but we will clap for you.
Thank you.
If you'd like to say a couple of words, Diane, you can go first and, and Nancy.
Sure. I'd like to thank Manager Donahue, Mayor Leahy, and members of the city council for supporting me and the DPD team. As you can imagine, I spent some time thinking about what I wanted to say to all of you tonight. I had a long list of all the great projects we have worked on together and how far they've progressed. Historic park restorations, playgrounds, canalways, downtown improvements, business development, successful grant writing, and so much more have been a daily focus of my life for many years. Some of them, like the Jam and Tanner Street Urban Renewal Plans, began while I was pregnant with my now thirty-four-year-old son. As they say, all good things take time. I am happy to say that the Riverwalk and the current phase of the Concord River Greenway will be completed this year. The HCID is gaining great interest from developers now that the garage is completed. The Lord Overpass is progressing, and when complete, the entrance to the city will be transformed. We can all be proud of these accomplishments. You are all aware of these great projects because they would not have advanced without your support. I decided what I really wanted to be remembered for and one of my personal priorities are the partnership and relationships formed over the years. Thank you to all the partners that collaborate with the city and DPD to make our projects the best they can be. Thanks to the neighborhood groups and residents who share their ideas and concerns and help us inform the decisions we make. And thank you to the DPD staff, current and those who have moved on, for their contributions to Lowell. I have tried to leave, lead with honesty and integrity. I have enjoyed mentoring DPD staff and I cared about their success and how we face challenges together. Thank you all for your hard work and commitment to Lowell. This year has been a testament for your ability to function during challenging times. Thanks especially to Nancy Sprenod for taking care of all the DPD directors for many, many years. They definitely broke the mold with Nancy. She is one of a kind and she has taken care of all of us. I don't think the city council meetings would go so smoothly if she didn't put together all of the DPD motions in the format that they should be in, so thank you Nancy and congratulations on your retirement. I've worked for the city for twenty-eight years and enjoyed a career with many interesting and rewarding experiences. Working together, we have been able to prioritize important work and make decisions that support all Lowell residents. I am proud of our collective achievements that have made Lowell a better place to live, work, play, and learn. I am proud to have worked in a community that supports decisions to make more, life more equitable for all residents and strives for responsible progress and development. I hope that the preservation of open space remains a priority for the city and that we all remember how important it is to encourage children and adults to appreciate the natural environment. Leaving Lowell will not be easy. There are so many people in Lowell that showed me so much compassion after losing my son Andrew many years ago. I will never, ever forget their gestures of kindness that continue to this day. You made a difference, all of you, in my life. It has been an honor to work for Lowell's first woman city manager. I will miss Lowell, but don't worry, I'll be back for the ribbon cuttings. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Diane. Nancy, would you like to unmute and say a couple of words?
Uh, yes. I just wanted to say it's been an honor and a privilege to have worked for the city of Lowell for the last forty-six years, and I am extremely grateful for the opportunities that I have received. Working for the Department of Plan and Development has been an incredible experience, something that I will never forget, and made possible because of the leadership of the amazing directors, sorry, that I have had over the last forty-six years. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Nancy. We appreciate it. Um, I'm sure there's a few councils that probably want to say a few words. Uh, let the vice chair go first, Counselor Mercia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am so grateful to these two women who have been a pillar of this city of Lowell for all the great work that they have done. And I know Nancy from many, many years back, you know, I, I'm the person that was there quite a long time ago. So I really can appreciate the hard work because I've seen it firsthand. And Nancy, um, Diane is right, you are a credit to that office and you made everybody look good. And I think the world of you. I'm gonna miss you tremendously. And I know how emotional you feel because we're losing two wonderful women. And I hope you have a wonderful retirement, the both of you. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Elliot, I'll just go down the line because everybody's raising their hand.
Sure. No, I'll be brief. Uh, Counsel Mercy really, uh, encapsulated both the dedication and effort from, from both outstanding employees for the city. Um, I actually had the privilege, uh, many, many years ago, working with both of these. And Diane, you're right, uh, Nancy is the glue that kept that entire place together through decades. And you're one of these individuals behind the scene, Nancy, and, um, having worked side by side for four, five years, I know how dedicated, how much of a hard work you are and your attention to detail and making sure things are done right is second to none. So there's a big void that we're gonna, um, have in planning and development, um, with the departure of these two individuals. But you'll be sorely missed and, uh, just professionals for so many decades. I, I wish, I wish you well.
Thank you. Counsel Sumeris.
I'm just trying to get in there. Thank you, thank you. Uh, to Diane and Nancy, I mean, how do we say thank you? Nancy, uh, Diane, from the first time I met you, uh, I knew from that first moment that you were a very serious person, hardworking, and you always gave the right advice. And there are many projects that have come to fruition because of your hard work. And, uh, you know, sometimes we, we say these things and the people of Lowell, our constituents, will listen to these programs and will acknowledge that. But this is the case where the, you're two women who really have, not only have you done your job, but you've cared for people, you've cared for other people, and you've both been very supportive of people that you work with, and that's important. Nancy, I've known you for a long time and you, and I've known a lot of your, your former bosses and, uh, you'd be brought up at different times that, uh, you will say managed to make sure that they stayed out of trouble. Okay, but the thing is, you were always there, you were a great help, and you've been great for the city. I, you know, I could go on, but you know, you get a little emotional, I mean, because you are two people who are truly going to be missed because, one, you're two good people, but two, you also contributed very much to the well-being of the city. You did good work. And that counts for so much, but I also think being a good and kind person means even more. So thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other councils? Counselor Rock?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, Diane, thank you for your service to the city. I, I think that, you know, city managers change, councils change, state, local officials change, but you know, you have been here for a lot of the major turnaround, uh, in the city of Lowell. Some of the projects that, uh, you've been a part of over the past, you know, two and a half, three decades. It really, you know, you should write a book one day about all the things that you're a part of, all the things that you've had a hand in. Uh, and you know, just drive around the city and you see all the stuff that, um, that probably doesn't get done, right? With, without, without your work, um, you know, as part of this. So thank you for that and best of luck, uh, in your retirement. And you know, it's funny, I got a quick story with Nancy. Probably, you know, how many years ago it was, it was definitely twenty years ago. I had, uh, my first time going in front of the Board of Pox. And, uh, you know, sometimes that can be pretty intimidating, uh, with, with the Board of Pox. And I, uh, I imagine Nancy was leaving for the day, uh, six o'clock meeting. And, um, you know, this is before I even knew Counsel Mercy at the time. And, and she walked me upstairs, she told me how it was gonna work. Cause the room was packed with people, uh, and, uh, you know, she stayed and no idea who I was, but just walked me through the process of how it was gonna work. Uh, and, uh, you know, and, and everything went fine. So, you know, a couple of different things that, uh, just tell a story about two people that, uh, have put the city, uh, before themselves for, for a number of years. So, uh, thank you once again and best of luck retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Nancy and Diane for your service to the city. I only had the pleasure of working, uh, one year professionally with both of you. But, um, being the first-year counselor, um, last year, I just want to thank Diane so much for treating all the motions that deal with the city with courtesy and professionalism. I know there was one motion that, uh, one of my first motions was very, uh, complicated and complex. Instead of speaking on the phone, you invited me into your office and speak with you and your staff to make sure that you understand exactly what I wanted. Um, you really take the time, um, and the care to make sure that you get things done right. And I will appreciate that, and I want to wish both of you the best of luck in your retirement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor New?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, let me start with Nancy. Nancy, you have care for multiple director, DPD director. Your institutional knowledge is impossible to replace. And like Diane said, you know, Diane too, Diane is very committed. Her commitment and dedication to, uh, the, the city and to DPD is unwavering. And, and you know, everyone's right, we lose and you're earning, or you're deserving the time off, uh, but the city is gonna be impossible to replace this too, um, lady. And thank you both very, very much.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, just want to extend, uh, my thanks to both Diane and Nancy as well. And I think one of the great things about, uh, the department is that you literally get to see the imprint uh, that your work makes on the city. Um, you, you can see all the projects that you've, you've had an impact on. And, and, uh, as, uh, in these coming, you know, months and years, I hope you can, you know, travel around the city and take pride, uh, in being able to, to see the, the fruits of your labor in, in terms of past projects and, and projects that will continue to move forward. So I, I know it's just an incredible amount of, uh, work and professionalism and expertise that goes into making these things happen. So I want to thank you both for all of your work over the years and congratulate you both on your retirement.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, this truly is a bittersweet night to be losing, um, two of the most incredible employees in the history of the city of Lowell. Um, I, I can't, uh, I, I agree completely with everything that's been said. Um, for the past several weeks, I've tried to figure out ways to reject the notice of retirement. I realize there's no legal way to do that, but, but when I tell you that, um, this is leaving a huge void, you know, for the city. And, uh, and, and, you know, the, although it's sweet because I'm happy for both of you to be able to have your well-deserved time with your family and time for retirement. But, uh, you know, it's all been said, but you know, Nancy, you are the utmost professional. Uh, from the time I first came on the council, many, many, many years ago, there was no one kinder, more professional, always had a smile on her face and in her voice. When you asked her for help, she was always there. And, uh, as well as all the behind the scenes that, um, you know, many people get credit for. And oftentimes, people don't realize, the ones who do all that hard work and the research and the reports aren't the ones standing up at the mic on Tuesday night. So thank you for everything you've done, Nancy. Please, you know, remember that you have a very, very special place in the history of the city of Lowell. Um, Diane, you know, for three decades, uh, there isn't anything, as we look around the city, um, projects, developments, direction, um, where the city has come that your fingerprints aren't on. And that is a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment, especially because we look at where the city has gone in these three decades and has come so far. Um, it is truly, um, has been an honor to work with you and has been an honor to work with Nancy. Uh, as I said, there is no one better, no one more professional, no one more talented. Uh, very, very, very big shoes to fill. I don't kid myself. I don't think we will fill them, uh, very easily. Uh, but you've left a blueprint as well. And, uh, you know, like all good leaders, you have also, you know, left in your wake a lot of people you've mentored, a lot of people that you've worked with, uh, and some direction for all of us. But, um, as I said, I, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you each, um, for everything that you've done. I want to thank you for your friendship. I want to thank you for your professionalism. And I truly do wish you, um, the best, um, as you move forward. You, Diane, uh, next week on March first. Nancy, we have you for another month. Thank you so much. And you, uh, on that day. So thank you both so much.
Thank you. Anything else on the screen? Want to say anything? Are we good?
Can I just jump in here for one quick second? I don't want to tie this meeting up. Um, but I just, I had to say something to Diane and Nancy, obviously working with them all these years. I thought, uh, as a tribute to you, Diane and Nancy, I had to make sure I put that statue up behind me tonight. Um, and one thing I said to Craig Thomas this week was, and it starts at the top with you, that DPD has always been very easy to work with. And you went over and above with the statue. You have no idea what this means to the members of this organization. And to be able to ride by this police department at night and see this statue the way it's lit up in honor of Chris Russo's, uh, I, to me, it shows us that we take our responsibilities, uh, as police very seriously. So I want to thank you for that, and I wish you the best of luck. And Nancy, always remember, even though you're gone, you're still part of the team here. So if you have any issues over in that neighborhood, you call Carol up, you make sure I stop what I'm doing, and I get on the phone and we'll fix it, okay? The best of luck to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And we wish you the best. Uh, Diane, you're, you'll start your vacation early. And like you said, Nancy, we have you for another month, so, um, all the best to both of you. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Uh, next on the, you, yeah, uh, so now I need a motion to accept this place on file by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Sumeris. City clerk, um, need to accept the minutes of the finance subcommittee meeting, February ninth. City council regular meeting, February ninth. City council meeting, executive session, February tenth. Auditor and court personnel oversight subcommittee, February sixteenth. And city council. city council special meeting, February 16th. Uh, need a motion for acceptance placed on file by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Rock. Uh, next, we'll get into the utility public hearing. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah. Utility Public hearing, TC Systems, AT&amp;T, uh, Goner Group requests installation underground conduit for a small cell antenna on pole number five on Abbott Streets. Uh, let's see, open up the meeting to all those in favor, all those in favor.
I think there's a, uh, there's Chris Marriott from...
Yes, yes, I'm on.
All right.
Yeah, this is Chris. Hello?
Hi, Chris, you're all set. You can speak.
Yes, uh, we're looking to get, uh, ground location between, um, utility pole six dash eighty-four and utility pole five on Abbott Street, roughly between Richmond Ave. and Lawrence Street, uh, for telecommunications conduit.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in favor? Favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anyone in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for report and recommendation by Council Elliot, seconded by Councilor Chow. Okay. Uh, communications.
I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna let, um, people in that, I guess we're gonna go to the Rockbridge presentation now, so there's a few people I'm letting in from the, from the waiting room now, because just give me a second, okay?
So Madam Manager will do the presentation for us, and then we'll get the responses.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if we could do the, uh, presentation from the Mass DOT folks, um, first. Um, we'd appreciate taking that out of order. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm getting them on already.
Plots letting them in now.
Is this, um, is anyone from, um, is Maureen part of the group here for the Rockbridge? She's in the waiting room?
Yes, she is.
Okay, let me let her in. Can I have somebody on an iPhone that I, I can't identify? Are they part of that group too?
We have, we have Mark Kalanowski, Kyle Olson. I don't see Kyle Olson, so perhaps that's him. Excellent.
Madam Manager, I think we're all, everybody's in.
Thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, this is a report, I, I believe Councilor Rock had asked for previously, um, the Mass DOT had made a presentation, uh, to the community, um, but there was a request, uh, for, for a presentation here to the council, um, regarding the project, and so I'll turn it over unless there's, uh, anything further, uh, I'd turn it over to, uh, the team who is going to be presenting, uh, here tonight to the council and the community.
So I, I will begin. Um, my name is Steve McLaughlin. I am a civil engineer with Mass DOT. I am the project manager on the Rock Bridge replacement project. We've come before the city a couple times in the past. Uh, I think this might be my third or fourth meeting before city council. Uh, and, uh, we, we do have progress, uh, that I'd like to report. The, the project itself, um, the planning study suggested that we look at three alternatives, uh, to study for replacing the bridge. Uh, we've done that study, it's, it's, we're about at its conclusion, and, um, we're hearing feedback a, as a result of the study, just so that we can select an alternative. Uh, I will tell you, we are leaning toward alignment three, and the presentation tonight will, will show you why, why we're doing that. After we select an alignment, uh, we'll go through the type study phase where we talk about what type of bridge do we put in. First, we have to find out where it's located, then what type, is it a steel bridge, is it a concrete bridge, et cetera. Uh, and we'll also do a functional design report where we look at the intersection design to sweat that out a little more than it is now, uh, because certainly the intersections on either side are crucial to, to getting it all to work. Uh, we have to go through our environmental permitting process, then we'll go through, at this time, it's leaning toward a design build. Uh, after our 25% design, we'll put it out on the street for a design build team. They'll complete the final design and into construction. Uh, construction will be certainly, uh, in this decade, and I'm not trying to be flip, uh, we do need to get funding for it. It was, uh, identified in the recent bond bill, um, that said, it still has to appear on the statewide transportation improvement plan. Um, and that'll be for, for the funding. The alternative that we're looking at, cost escalated, uh, which is inflation adjusted, is, uh, $142 million, about what we're looking at now, for, and this is for alignment three, if that is the one we end up selecting. So with that, we've got a, a little about fifteen-minute presentation on, on how we got to this. I'd like to go through that, and then we'll have Q and A.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. My name is Topher Smith. I, uh, I'm our project manager from HNTB, the design team, and I'll kick off our, our presentation here. So, project location, everyone knows the project location here on the western side of Lowell, and this also includes our project limits, uh, which have not changed since the last time we spoke. The purpose and need, uh, continues to be the same as it was, uh, when we spoke most recently, is to replace the, uh, the functionally obsolete bridge and enhance safety, not just for vehicles, but for all users of the bridge, including emergency vehicles, bikes, pedestrians, and watercraft underneath the bridge. It also includes, uh, traffic operations improvements at all of those intersections included within the, the scope of work, which include Wood Street with Pawtucket Boulevard, Wood Street with Middlesex Street, and Wood Street with Princeton Boulevard, as well as the intersection with Old Ferry and Pawtucket. As for our schedule, uh, Stephen mentioned, uh, most of, most of this here, we've, we've wrapped up our first round of stakeholder coordination and alignment and alignment analysis. As of the tail end of last year, we had a public meeting on December 9th, and got some great feedback, and we have submitted a draft alignment evaluation, which is currently under review at Mass DOT. And as we head into the spring, we'll, we'll present, uh, as we advance the, the schedule that, that Steve described there, as we go to the type of study, as we identify our cross-sectional studies, we'll have another series of meetings with our working group, uh, updates like this with other stakeholders as well, and, uh, and then we'll move on into the summer as we refine things even further. We'll go for another round as well. Each of these will have a public meeting. And in, uh, 21, 22, we'll advance for 20, we'll advance for preliminary design, have a formal public hearing, and then we'll advance, uh, permitting right-of-way acquisition and likely design. So a little quick recap of those three, uh, the three alignment alternatives that are being evaluated. Alignments one and two, uh, are resulting in a three-leg intersection similar to the three-leg intersection with Pawtucket Boulevard and the bridge as it is today. Um, however, alignment two has shifted slightly to the west to facilitate single-stage construction. It moves it outside of the state highway layout and on to the Lowell Heritage State Park property in doing so. Alignment number three, uh, shifts farther to the west to make a four-leg intersection with Old Ferry Road and, uh, and avoids the Lowell Heritage State Park. One thing I want to mention, as we go through this presentation, we're gonna repeat some things that folks have heard, um, but primarily, we're gonna focus on the northern part of the project. Right now, we're not gonna talk a whole lot about, um, Middlesex intersection with Wood Street or Princeton Boulevard with Wood Street, simply because those are the same amongst the three different alignments. We'll talk more about that at the next series of meetings. So a couple other similarities and differences, the bridge length of alignment number three is about, uh, 200 feet longer, and it requires an additional tier as compared to alternatives one and two. And all three of the alignments will have to facilitate clearances over the MBTA railroad, Merrimack River, and we're looking to try to maintain the shared use path on, that's, uh, adjacent to the northern abutment over on the Lowell Heritage Park side of the river. And all three of the alignments will also be striving to accommodate the 30-inch water main that's been requested. Without pass it to Maureen McMahon Associates, who will be talking about traffic.
Thank you, Topher. Uh, so I did speak to you at the last, um, city council hearing on Rockbridge, and I, I want to start with the study area for traffic, just to remind you that the study area is much larger than the design study area. Uh, we're looking at a number of intersections, as you can see, we've got 14 local intersections and 17 regional. And on the next slide, you'll see just a brief summary of, of our traffic analysis. Uh, last time I was with you, I spoke to you about our crash analysis and our traffic volumes, both, um, pre-COVID volumes and projected to 2039 traffic volumes. Since that last meeting, we've, our traffic analysis has really focused on, uh, evaluating the three alternatives that Topher just described. Next slide. So first, we spent some time digging deeper into the crash analysis. Um, as Topher described, all three alignments are the same south, on the south side of the river. On the north side of the river, they touch down on Pawtucket Boulevard at different points, and as you're probably aware, we're entering a crash cluster on Pawtucket Boulevard. So it's important for us to really understand what's happening there. And you can see from this diagram that, uh, we're demonstrating that what happens at one intersection affects nearby intersections, especially as they're closely spaced. So that combined with, um, lane changes and some of the cut-to traffic patterns we're seeing all add to the conflicts in this area. This has helped to inform the design alternatives. So as we look at these and compare them from a traffic perspective, we're not gonna focus in on just one intersection, we're gonna look at regional travel times, but we're gonna consider the perspective of each of the users, whether you're a cyclist or pedestrian or a motorist, uh, or even an emergency vehicle that has to get through this area. What I'd like to do first is just, uh, give you some of the detail of the design of, at the touchdown intersections. Alignment one touches down exactly where the Rockbridge touches down today. Uh, however, we're proposing intersection improvements, namely added capacity. Um, you can see a second left turn lane in the westbound direction. On the northbound direction, we have formalized a two-lane approach, uh, different than what's there today. Today, it's a little bit ambiguous. We remove the channelized right turns, and in the eastbound direction, you'll see an exclusive right turn lane. Going on to alternative two, we shift that same design down the road a little bit. We align opposite of the Market Basket driveway, generally have the same capacity improvements under alternative alignment two. And then when we look at alignment three, uh, the same capacity improvements that I already mentioned on one and two are added here. In addition, Old Ferry Road southbound becomes a three-lane approach, and our northbound Rockbridge approach is now three-lane. So let's understand how this plays out with, with a comparison of operations and safety for these alignments. The box on the right side of this graphic talks about the improvements for each mode of transportation, uh, for alternatives one and two, which are very similar from a traffic perspective. And then the other box, uh, lays out alternative three. Um, when we're looking at the motorists, we are able to, with the designs I just showed you, we are able to achieve level service D or better in the peak hours, and we have volume to capacity ratios less than one, which is very good operations for this area. Um, we have some safety improvements in terms of clearance times on the signals as well. For the pedestrians, we have included exclusive pedestrian signal phasing at all of the proposed signals on Pawtucket Boulevard. We've also added, um, pedestrian crossings on every approach, uh, and removing the channelized right turns is a big pedestrian safety improvement. Cyclists will see the addition of bike lanes on both the Rockbridge and Pawtucket Boulevard, and the signals being proposed here would all have emergency vehicle access. So in a way, uh, when we're looking at the signalized intersections, they're pretty comparable in terms of what we've achieved, both from a safety and a, um, operational perspective. So to give you a feel in a different manner of, of how to compare these, we looked at, um, travel times for a number of different routes in the area, and we compared what would happen if we did nothing, which is what we call our no-build scenario. We compare that to the signalized option of alignment one and two, and the signalized option of alignment three, and you'll see pretty much in every direction, and especially in the predominant southbound direction during the AMP peak hour, we're seeing time savings as much as four to six minutes for these trips with these build alternatives. There are a few cases where you may see an increase in traffic, and that's generally due to the addition of safety improvements at the signals, such as exclusive head phasing, um, and primarily that would affect through trips on Pawtucket Boulevard. Those changes are pretty small, less than a minute typically. So at this point, we're able to say that we've improved the operations, we've improved the, the safety, we have good travel time savings, but could we take it even further? Are there alternatives to the intersection designs that we've put forth? Um, and one of the things we consider is how many conflict points we have at an intersection. So when we touch down in a T-shaped intersection and signalize it, we're looking at nine conflict points. So for example, alternatives one and two, if you were going from Rockbridge to Old Ferry Road, you would go through two T-intersections, so you would have 18 conflict points. On alternative three, when we align it as a four-legged intersection, we now encounter 32 conflict points. However, if we were to convert that to a roundabout, we reduce to eight conflict points. And moving to the next slide, another alternative that we consider at the intersections, something referred to as a Michigan left turn, and what this does is, um, you wind up restricting some of the left turns at the signal, and you have those movements be made by means of making a right turn, doing a U-turn, and coming back at the signal as a through trip. So let's take a minute to see how these apply to the three alignments. So beginning with alignments one and two, we looked at a roundabout, you can see that drawn out at the top, we're looking at a two-lane roundabout. Uh, we also looked at what we term a turbo roundabout, which may look a little scarier than it is. We generally, on the turbo roundabout, what we're doing is we're taking away any movements that can happen outside of the roundabout, pulling them outside of that roundabout. So for instance, if you're going eastbound to southbound, you could make that movement as a right lane without entering the roundabout. Both of these alternatives, um, worked well operationally under alignments one and two, and are being further considered. We applied the same thing to alignment three, uh, and because of the traffic assignments, the operations were not as good for alignment three. Uh, we found that the westbound to southbound movement really dominated the roundabout and kind of choked off Old Ferry Road and Pawtucket Boulevard. So these are not being recommended to be further studied. We did, however, feel that the Michigan left turn option was applicable to alignment three, and what we're proposing in this situation is to restrict the northbound and southbound lefts. So for example, if you were traveling southbound on Old Ferry Road, destined to Pawtucket Boulevard eastbound, instead of turning left, you would actually turn right, get into the left turn lane, do a U-turn at the median open, opening, and then approach the signal as a through trip. Some of the benefits to the Michigan left, one is that we can reduce the cycle length of the signal, another one is that we have additional, uh, safe locations for crosswalks along Pawtucket Boulevard. So now that we've analyzed all of these intersection alternatives, we've looked for a way to give you a comparison, and we went back to the travel times. So what you'll see in this graphic is for alignments one and two in the AMP peak hour, and everything we did for the PM as well, we just, uh, for the sake of this presentation, we focused on the more dominant peak hour. You can see a comparison for each of these routes between our no-build alternative, our signalized, uh, proposed alternative, a roundabout, and a turbo roundabout. And the big picture takeaway here is that the three options, the signalized roundabout and turbo, are all much better than the no. And when we compare the difference between the signalized and the roundabout and the turbo, there's not that much difference between the three options, but they are all much better than the no-build, again, in the range of four to six minutes in some cases. And the next slide will show you the same type of information for alignment three. Uh, again, we were seeing improvements over the no-bill condition. In this situation, we evaluate the signalized option and the Michigan left. Um, the Michigan left does include additional travel, but it also includes additional safety. So we're constantly striking a balance there, and, you know, the numbers speak for themselves in terms of, you know, And, you know, the numbers speak for themselves in terms of the improvements that we're seeing overall. So what we were really left with at the end of our, we have all of this massive traffic analysis, is that we have three alignments that all work from an operational and safety point of view. We have some intersection options that we can further refine and consider that even improve safety more. We didn't have one alignment that stood out well above the others. And same with the intersection options, we didn't have any that were greatly better or worse than the others. So traffic didn't wind up really being a deciding factor when we were picking an alignment. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mark, who will talk to you about the environmental aspects, which were more of a deciding factor for this slide.
Maureen, that was great. So last time we were all together, we spoke about some of the existing environmental conditions and the number of state and federal environmental policies and regulations that the project will comply with. I've gone a little bit further in our analysis, and what we want to discuss here tonight is some of the key differentiating considerations that actually make, or present differences amongst the alternatives. Next. The first of that being impacts to wetlands. And the majority of the wetland impacts, actually all the wetland impacts, are located on the northern side of the bridge. And if we look here in that table, on the right-hand side of the graphic, you see that alignment one has the fewest number of combined both temporary and permanent impacts to wetlands. And that's actually because, again, that alignment is going to be located in place of where the existing bridge is, and the wetland impacts that we anticipate being associated with alignment one are actually required to support construction. So those 626 temporary square feet of impacts are to support construction, and we do not anticipate any permanent fill to wetlands. We shift over to alignment two, we see over 11,000 square feet of impacts to wetland resources. Now, that 11,000 square feet is a significant number. It's a substantial amount of wetland fill, and comes with it a entire suite of regulatory challenges and obstacles that would be required if we were to pursue alignment two. And moving over to alignment three, we do see a little bit more impacts than alignment one, but significantly less than alignment two. And that total number of impacts at being over 4,100 square feet, that's an important number, because it stays under 5,000 square feet. And without getting into the nuances of the various state and federal regulations, I can tell you that it is far easier to permit and obtain approval for a project that proposes less than 5,000 square feet of impacts ordering vegetated wetland. Next. Next, the key consideration was recreation in open space. What you see here in the green is the limits of Lowell Heritage State Park owned by the Department of Conservation Recreation. And then over to the blue is the city-owned Wang soccer fields. And again, if I can call your attention to that table, which shows permanent impacts to open space. Now, a little bit of a disclaimer on that permanent impacts, it's worth noting that because the state highway layout cuts so closely there to the limits of Lowell Heritage State Park, where it comes in at that triangle shape, there's likely going to be construction easements that are going to be required to construct that bridge that would exceed a duration of over six months, and that, under some regulations, would be considered a permanent occupancy or a permanent conversion of that recreational space. So even though we're showing no built condition impacts under alignment one, from a regulatory and review standpoint, there will likely be impacts that will have to be considered. Alignment two cuts right through that undeveloped portion of Lowell Heritage State Park, and thus has the most amount of impacts to that facility. And then alignment three, actually, we have aligned that to where it just avoids any impacts, and it looks like it cuts the corner there, but it does not, of impacts to Lowell Heritage State Parks. But we do have impacts with alignment three to the Wang soccer field. Now, it's important to note that those impacts of alignment three on the Wang soccer field property are far enough away from the fields themselves, where we do not anticipate there being any impact on the functional use of that facility. Next. So there are, under the lens of open space, two very important regulations to consider, is section 4F of the Department of Transportation Act, and section 6F of the Land and Water Conservation Act. And again, I'm going to spare you from getting into the nuances of these regulations. There is a lot of detail that could be covered here. But to keep it at a high level, both of these policies require that the Federal Highway Administration for 4F and the National Park Service for Section 6F review any potential impact, and ensure that there is no feasible, reasonable, or prudent alternative that could avoid an impact on that property. That's important to remember. Next. So to kind of summarize all of this, you can see here in a table that we have wetlands under the jurisdiction of the Wetland Protection Act and the Clean Water Act, that's parenthesized there. Alignment one has the fewest, alignment two has far exceeds that of alignment one and three would be very, very challenging to permit. Lowell Heritage State Park, which is protected under 4F and 6F, which we just discussed, alignment three avoids altogether those impacts to Lowell Heritage State Park, which is going to be a consideration if reviewed and when reviewed by National Park Service if there were to be an impact, because there would be an alternative that avoids those impacts altogether. Wang soccer field, again, protected by section 6F, I'm sorry, 4F, not 6F, which alignment three would impact. And then, lastly, to discuss the opportunity to improve and provide betterment to Lowell Heritage State Park. Alignment one provides the least opportunity, as it would be in a similar alignment of the existing structure. Alignment two does provide improvement, because you can then, with that, that open space being provided, when you remove the existing structure, you could have landscape, some of that space could be incorporated into the recreation facility. But then alignment three provides the most opportunity for betterment to that resource, as it relocates the entirety of the structure off of the DCR facility.
Thanks, Mark. Then I'll take it back and round out some other other components of the project and the evaluation here. We took a look at the vertical geometry at the, at the intersections at the northern limit of the bridge. So what you're looking at here are two profiles. It's as if you were standing to the east of the bridge near the boathouse, looking at the northern abutment here. And what I want to draw your attention to is the distance between the river and the abutment and Pawtucket Boulevard, in both cases, between alternatives one and two, and alternative three. There's, there's a lot more space between the river and Pawtucket Boulevard for alternative number three. And what that allows for is some additional flexibility to get over the clearances, over the proposed pedestrian path and the river, accommodating the water main that we need to include, and touching down at Pawtucket Boulevard. So there's more distance to create that connection. And in alternatives one and two, we're looking at roughly, depends on the configuration and the elevation of the path and the water main, but roughly five-foot grade raises at, at the intersection, which is a lot of roadway work and utilities that have to be relocated a wall, and causes some challenges for access to those local driveways and local roads. Alternative three, with that additional space, provides additional flexibility and requires less of a grade raise, or potentially no grade raise, depending on how we configure the path and the water main. A little bit of constructability and temporary traffic impacts. Alignments two and three are built offline, not in the same location as the existing structure. So those construction activities can happen while, while current traffic operations are happening on the existing bridge. Alignment one number one is a little bit different in that it is on, it is aligned in the same location as the existing bridge. And in order to, in order to stay away from the Lowell Heritage State Park and stay within the state highway layout, we need to build that new bridge very tightly up close to the existing structure. We're limited on the distance between the, between the existing structure and the state highway layout. So it only allows, it would allow us, we'd be able to fit in two lanes and a sidewalk in that temporary first phase. However, what I draw your attention to here is that the sidewalk itself, there's only so much room to build that, that northbound, or rather, the eastern sidewalk on the bridge. And in all likelihood, we may have a wider sidewalk that's desired in the final condition, and that would require an additional stage with a longitudinal joint down that northbound or eastern sidewalk. And in general, there's, there's several, several construction phases. It would take longer, and there's additional, additional construction quality risks inherent to staging like this, as opposed to offline single-station structure. Rightaway impacts, we've done some evaluation here. I will point out that in alignments one and two, there, we are showing that that impact to the, to the Bolero and the Market Basket driveway. On alignment two, you can see the impacts extensively to Lowell Heritage State Park, as Mark had described before. And alignment number three, you can see the impacts to the city of Lowell property that's between the Wang soccer field and Lowell Heritage State Park, which is where the most of the impacts for this alternative happen. As well as, all three alternatives have a small impact on either side of Old Ferry Road to accommodate the upgrades at that location. Walking times, we've talked about this a bit in some of our previous meetings, that walking times would be a little bit longer across alternatives two and three, particularly three is a longer bridge. And it would also be longer then for a trip same going from south of the bridge, across the bridge, and then east of the Belgrade Boathouse. It would be, it would be longer in alternative three than it would be for alternative one. However, depending on where you're going, if you're going to Market Basket, or the Wang soccer field, or the UMass Lowell Shuttle Stop, alignment three may be a little bit longer to get across the bridge. It's actually a shorter trip overall, because it brings that intersection, or it brings, brings the bridge closer to those destinations. So pros and cons. Pedestrian connectivity, so alignments one and two would inherently have an additional crosswalk, because we'd have an additional intersection located near where the existing intersection is, as opposed to combining it to a single intersection at Old Ferry Road. However, as Maureen mentioned, there is an option for the Michigan left, which would provide not only the additional crosswalk on this side of that intersection, but also another crosswalk west of the intersection as well. And we also have opportunities to evaluate a mid-block if it's such a so warranted, which kind of equalizes these alternatives in this regard. Watercraft considerations, we spent, we spent some good time communicating with the, with the boating community. A big thank you to them for their input and their work with our surveyor, who went and, and collected survey data within the river on the 2,000-meter race course. We learned that it's particularly important for this, these members of the community to try to increase this course from six lanes to eight lanes. It would, it would make this 2,000-meter course, which is apparently a very desirable course in New England, it would bring it up to Olympic standards, which would, would really upgrade this facility and make it a much more desirable race venue. So we looked at that, and we tried to see if there was a difference between the three alternatives, if we'd be able to achieve those eight lanes. And it, and it appears we're able to achieve eight lanes for all three of the alternatives, which is a real positive for the project. Schedule. So for the schedule, alignment three being built offline, without the permitting considerations that Mark was describing earlier, would be our shortest path, if you will, to the timing of the bridge opening. Alignment one adds one year for that multi-stage construction, and alignment two, we'd be adding two years for additional permitting, if we were able to even permit that alignment. And this relates closely to the cost. And so the costs have been calculated in $20,20, and then escalated by the amount, by the amount of years expected for the midpoint of construction. And those are escalated at 4% FHWA recommended escalation rate. And alignment one at 133 million, alignment two at 128 million, and alignment three at 142 million, which puts them within nine to 10 million dollars of one another. Important to note that these are based on our current assumptions, which are very much subject to change. As Steve mentioned, we're going to go into the type study phase next. We're going to determine what the bridge type is, what the materials are made out of, pier spacing, how wide the structure needs to be with that cross-section. So these costs are based on an 84-foot-wide structure, which is quite generous for providing nine feet worth of buffered bike lanes, and large sidewalks on both sides of the bridge, as well as four, four travel lanes. Again, we'll talk more about, you know, finalizing that cross-section, but these costs are based on, on that width, as well as a steel plate girder structure type. And so in summary, kind of pulling, you know, all of this that we've said together here, is a little bit of a heat map matrix that we have here for all, all three alignments, with some of the different measures of effectiveness and the areas of evaluation. And so the color means is that green being most beneficial relative to the other alignments, red being least beneficial relative to the other alignments, and yellow somewhere in between. What you can see when you step back and look at the picture, the top, top items listed as measures of effectiveness are traffic operations and safety and multimodal connectivity. These are, these are based on our, our purpose and need for the project. And you can see here that we're able, as Maureen mentioned, we're able to provide significant improvement to those for all three of the alignments. And then, as you look down, down the list, you can see where some of those pressure points are with vertical, vertical bridge, roadway geometry being a little bit challenging at alignments one and two. Horizontal alignment is a little bit challenging for alignment three, but we're able to accommodate site distance. And you can see how alignment two has some serious red flags for the, for the environmental impacts. And you can see that alignment one also doesn't provide that opportunity for betterment to Lowell Heritage State Park. Moving down the list a little bit, you can see some of the other standout items. Constructibility in traffic, maintenance of traffic is a challenge for alignment number one, whereas it's better for alignment two and three. And you can see the schedule considerations for alignment three going the fastest, and alignment one and two going a bit slower. Also, we added a category here for public feedback, because we've had a, had a very robust public, public process here. We've had a working group, we've met with them twice. We've had the public meeting on December 9. We've had online feedback, up on our website, receiving feedback from the public for better part of a year now. And so far, from our meetings that we've had, we've, we've heard from the public that there seems to be a preference for alignment three. In fact, that we've heard mostly that. I believe we've had one comment on our, on our online feedback form, suggesting that there was a preference for alignment one. And so we included that here to reflect that we're listening. And with that, we look forward to listening a little bit more here, to any questions that folks may have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'll turn it over to you, Madam Mander, if you have any questions immediately, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. Maybe if we can take the shared screen down. But, you know, I don't have any questions. As I said, this was to present a presentation and with the updates to the council. Obviously, as, as the team has indicated, this is a work in progress. There are going to be other public meetings coming forward, where there'll be other inputs. So, yeah, I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And I have some other people who registered.
Matt, Councilman Marston, yeah, you hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to have my colleagues on the council receive the slide presentation. Is it possible we could do that and put it in our packet for the next city council meeting, just so we can... Is it possible we could do that and put it in our packet for the next city council meeting just so we can have it?
Yes.
Yeah, kind of, Councilor, we can, we'll, we'll get that and make sure it's available to you both digitally and the, uh, printout copy in your packet.
Okay, could you just, I'm curious about the, the width. Eighty-four feet or whatever doesn't mean anything to me. How many, do we have four lanes, two on each side in each direction or how? Take me over that bridge on one side and tell me what I'm looking at. Could you do that?
To, Tofer, can you ta- take the counselor over and, and just talk about various elements in the width that?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And so we have, the, the number of lanes on the bridge hasn't been determined yet and that cross-section hasn't been determined yet. But that eighty-four feet is based on four 11-foot lanes, so two in each direction, two northbound, two southbound. It also includes a buffered bicycle lane. So that's, that's a striped bike that's three. From vehicles and it's a six-foot bike lane. And then there would be a sidewalk that's roughly eight and a half feet wide and a, and a bridge railing on each side, if that gives you a picture of what we've carried here today.
Because it's, it's very important that we allow for emergency vehicles to go over that bridge and bring people safely to the, to Lowell General Hospital. That has always been something that bothered me because the way the bridge stands now, sits now, it doesn't help at all when traffic's on both sides and, and an ambulance can't get over or a fire engine can't get over. I'm very concerned about that. I, I wouldn't want to go through, uh, constructing a new bridge and not having that happen to, so that we can be safe for the people that we represent. That's my concern. I, I'm much more concerned about a, uh, emergency vehicle getting over there than I am a bicyclist, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. Councilor Rock?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we saw this, uh, presentation at a, at a recent NEMCOG meeting. Uh, I know that Ms. Woods is here as well. Um, and it, it does seem to be, whether it be, uh, the NEMCOG board, which has members from Chelmsford, Tinsborough, Drakehead, Lowell, um, the polar presentation. Um, and even tonight, it, it really looks like option three, um, is, is by far and away the best one to suit the city in, in many different, uh, areas. Um, you know, the neighborhood of Tuckerville, um, you know, more importantly that, you know, when it goes up right to Old Ferry and avoids, uh, the, the traffic that's there right now. But I guess my question to, uh, you know, to Mr. Smith or Ms. Woods, it would be, you know, I looked for a, a selection by the council this evening or, or some feedback or just strictly a presentation, uh, and, um, and just, you know, we've had public meetings over the years, uh, many of them, um, you know, not looking to delay the project any longer. Is it something that, that you, that you want from us or need from us, uh, to, uh, to move forward? You know, at the NEMCOG meeting that this was given to us, um, you know, I think everybody there was a option three, um, you know, in favor of it, but, uh, we wanted to, you know, present it to the city, uh, and to the city council first before, uh, NEMCOG took a stance.
Uh, let, let me respond up Steve McLaughlin with Mass D O T, the project manager. Um, tonight, this is a, a presentation to city council. We're not asking for you to vote or anything like that. Uh, listening to feedback is what we are doing and we are hearing any of your, your comments and questions and, and that's really important to us. We want to make sure that we get this right. And right now we, we explain the evidence on why we think option three is the way to go. Frankly, option two is probably not permissible and it seems like we've done our homework and there's no reason to go toward option two. Option one has some benefits, of course, and we weigh these, you know, this is a, this is infrastructure that's going to be here for over a hundred years. So we want to get it right. We want to do the right thing. Um, and that, that's why we're, we're being careful and crafting this, this discussion here. All of our evidence shows option three is the way to go. We might've missed something. You know, when, you, you, you drive over this every day, you, you know a little more than we do. So we're here to listen and, and, and hear what you have. If we're missing something, if we're getting something wrong, then, you know, this is a check and balance. That's all. Outside of that, we're going to go forward. We'll, we'll eventually select an alternative. We'll inform you all. Uh, then we'll proceed with the type study, a functional design report, sketch plan, 25% design, design, build, construction, and there we are. This is one step in the way.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and again, we'll tack off, you know, and we'll, we'll, we'll change. If, if, if we're missing something and, and you guys show us something about alignment one that, that we missed, right now we're not seeing it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We, we do have, um, three registered speakers. Should we go to the registered speakers? Mr. Clark?
Yeah, Senator Kennedy?
I've, I'm, I didn't register to speak. I, I'm really here just to, um, I just wanted to listen to the presentation, that's all.
All right. We wanted to see your face, Senator.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to see, see all of you people tonight, but everybody's doing a great job. And as long as I, as long as I've got the microphone, let me just say, give all my best to Nancy and Diane on, uh, on retirement. I was listening in on that part of the meeting as well, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, Roddy Ma, Representative Roddy Ma?
Yes, Mr. Clark, thanks very much. I, I just want to come by and say hello to everyone and I, I just want to say I'm very proud of the delegation, uh, starting with former Senator Eli Donahue, uh, the delegation Rep Nangle, former Rep Nangle, excuse me, Rep Tom Golden, uh, and also former Speaker Delio to combine two of the bridge that put it on the map with Mass D O T. And I'm here to say that the entire delegation is committed to move this project forward. So that's why I'm here to say that, uh, I think it's about time we put this on the map. Thank you, Mr. Clark, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Beverly Woods?
Hi, um, I just wanted to point out, just to, um, address some, some points that, um, were made earlier in terms of the NEMCOG board looking for some feedback from the city as Councilor Rock indicated. From the perspective of our board, I think everyone thought that alternative three was the favorite alternative, but they wanted just to give the city council an opportunity to weigh in and given that this is your city, in case there was something that we missed and that the council might, um, favor a different alternative. And I will say that regionally, this project is very important, um, to our communities outside of Lowell as well. Everyone sees this project as being incredibly important from a public safety perspective, as Councilor Mercer pointed out. Lowell General Hospital is the trauma center for our region and getting people from other communities into the city and to the hospital is really an important priority for us. So if, um, if this project, as you may or may not know, is one that will go on our transportation improvement program at some point, as Steve McLaughlin had pointed out, it's also in our long-range transportation plan. Uh, this year we'll start updating that long-range transportation plan. So if people have opinions that might be different, um, than what has been expressed in terms of the options here, it would be helpful to let us know and we can consider those, not only in bringing this project forward, but also in terms of how we address it within all of our transportation documents that are federally required. Thank you.
Thank you. Special speakers, uh, Councilor Rock?
Yeah, a quick question. So I know that we have Representative Ma and Senator Kennedy here. Is there any benefit to the, to the council for expressing a, a favorite option or, or an alignment going forward? Or is it just the case of, you know, whatever the state decides is the best one for Lowell, that's what we're going to get?
Hey, can you hear me? Yeah, Councilor, I don't know that there's a, a benefit to doing that this evening. Um, at some point, I think that there will be, and at some point it might be good to just form an ad-hoc subcommittee to just look at this, um, a little more closer. But, um, from everything that we've heard tonight, I have to agree with everybody else, I guess, that option three seems like, uh, the best option. I guess the only thing I would ask is of the people from Mass Dot is, um, if nobody likes option two, would, would it save any time to just dismiss option two and just take that out of the mix so that we're just looking at two options going forward?
So, it, the evidence points to, to option three clearly. Option two isn't really permissible, but we're carrying it. And a- as we go through the permitting process with the myriad of, of, you know, the Wellands Protection Act, Clean Water Act, that, and there's, there's a bunch of them. Um, Coast Guard, uh, they don't want to see an alternatives analysis. So we've done a robust alternatives analysis, to, to be clear. And, um, we'll go forward, you know, at this point with three, again, unless we hear something that we missed. Outside of that, we're, we're, we'll go forward with three. The, the, well, option one is, is harder to permit, just going to take longer and we have to demonstrate why we, why we would want this over three. Um, and I'm not, I'm not seeing any evidence to that. Um, and to be clear, you know, we have to prove that there's no feasible alternative. Um, that there's an overriding public need to, to whatever option we select. And it seems like we're demonstrating that option three meets all of that criteria.
I, I would, I would agree with that. I, my question was, would you save any time if you were to cut out option two and just consider the other two options? But I think what you're saying is there's benefit to considering multiple options. So it's good to keep option two with now?
We, we, we're not going to spend a lot more time on option two as it is. Um, we're really going to start, start our filings a- and, and go forward with three, really, unless we hear some.
Okay, thank you.
That's, 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 um, and then that's really as of tonight, uh, we just want to make sure that we, um, get any input. If there's something we missed, that's what we want to hear.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, thank, thanks, Steve. You know, I would agree that, I think it's far and away, I'm sure Councilor Elliott commented on it as well, from speaking to the residents of the neighborhood, that option three is, you know, like you said tonight, is just, you know, I think it's, it's so much better for, you know, in the neighborhood with the city and other surrounding towns. But I just didn't know if, if it's beneficial, uh, to speed up the process or to, I guess, send a message or whatnot. But if there's no benefit to it, then that's fine.
Look, I, I get the tone from, from how you are tonight when we're, I think we're good.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank, uh, Councilor Smash, do you have a question?
Thank you, uh, Senator Kennedy. Uh, it was mentioned, uh, by the group that, you know, the hundred million dollars that, uh, you spoke about, uh, when you announced the amount of money, this is something we've been waiting for a long time. But the thing is that e- everything's not settled at this particular point. And I think something that statement can be a little confusing that, okay, it'll be done in this decade, but is there any steps that the city council has to do with the delegation, working with the delegation? You, Senator, you know, uh, Representative Golden, Representative Roddy, you know, and, and how it, you know, then we have to do to ensure that this is put on the fast track and it does appear on the Secretary of Transportation's, you know, record book?
I think, um, I think the city council and the delegation, everybody wants to see this done as quickly as possible. This is, uh, you know, this project is long overdue really for the city. But I think that, you know, the way Mass Dot is moving along, I think that we're making good progress on this. Um, we were able to get on the Senate side, we were able to get a hundred million dollars, um, into the transportation bond bill, which is good. But I, I also have to point out that every time we meet with Mass Dot, um, the bridge gets, the estimate goes up and up. So it gets more and more expensive. And so I'm really anxious for them to complete it before we get to the $200 million mark. But aside from that, and more seriously, um, I think for right now, things are progressing as, as best they can. Um, and, and, and I think we just have to leave it up to Mass Dot for the, for the point. But I do think that there'll be, there'll be a point in time when, you know, the city council maybe should get more involved and should get, uh, should get very involved, I guess. And, um, and, and maybe there'll be a time when it would be a good idea to have an ad-hoc subcommittee just for the bridge and the construction of the bridge going forward.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, Councilor Smash, you're a big swimmer. Does the bridge look like it lines up okay for you?
I'm happy with it.
Councilor Elliott, did you have a question?
No, I just had a question on the funding issue, knowing that the hundred million is a good benchmark. But, you know, how do, moving forward, how do we, how do we lock in with Mass D O T wants to, not lock in with Mass D O T, but how, how do we lock a dollar figure in, um, in order to, to proceed? Um, you know, it's a moving target. So I guess the question is to, maybe a procedural question to Mass D O T. How, how do other projects sort of bear with this? And is, how do we get the appropriate dollar figure in the bond bill and then appropriate it?
So I, I, I suggest working with NEMCOG and, and Beverly to get this on the tip. Uh, having it identified in the bond bill certainly helps. It, it, it does. Um, that said, when, when we use federal funds, it must be identified on the tip as well. So we've got to work to get it identified on the tip in the appropriate year, uh, for when we've get it designed and permitted. We want to get it at the right timing for this. And right now we're at, um, uh, you know, about 142 million of, um, bid items. And, um, so that's the number, um, when you read about it in the paper, the low bid, that's what it'll be. The true cost will be a little bit higher than that because there's backend information.
Are we still on, do, do you have a ballpark when this could possibly be 100% design and go up the bid?
So, um, wh- what we're looking for is to go with a design build procurement. So at the 25% design, once we have a 25% design and all of the permitting and right-of-way, we'll go with design build. So we'll complete the design, which is not a, a huge amount more than where, where we are. Um, it's about a eighteen months to two years of more work where we are right now, uh, for the permitting process and right-of-way acquisition. Then we'll go through a design build procurement where we get a designer and a contractor team together. They'll complete the design and do the construction at the same time. It accelerates the, the delivery at the final end. And, um, we're probably about 24 months from being able to, uh, start that process just because of the permitting that we have to do on this. So, and then once they have it, um, it's, it'll be about four years until ribbon cutting. And, and that's why I say, and again, I'm not trying to be flippant, this decade will be done. But it certainly will be. Um, but it, it, it could be, um, 2018 by the time we're at ribbon cutting. It also depends on when that funding slot occurs, um, if there's any delay in, in when we actually identify the funding, or what year, um, do we end up slipping a year or not as a result of that? Um, right now, we're going as fast as we can to design and permit the project.
Steve, I think you meant 2028.
I did. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate it. And, um, I think it'd be an honest when it comes to the ribbon cutting, um, all of us who have lived through this for decades, I'm sure Beverly can attest, we're skeptical even to this point. But I think it, once the design is closer, then it becomes more of a reality and then the delegation is able to go with.
So let, let, let's look at the, at, at the positives, i- i- if I may, Counselor, and the design is funding. There's a design team, we're working, it's, it's all moving forward in a, in a positive way. We're looking at an alignment, um, through your, through your delegation, they've identified it in the bond bill. Now we have to, we have to put it in the tip. Uh, it's all moving forward. Everything's working well, uh, toward, toward getting this done. Uh, everything's moving along, i- it really, really well, I would say. Um, it is a big bridge, it's going to be here a long time and we do want to get everything right. So to, to some end, like, you work a little faster and I understand that, but we want to, um, we want to leave it, we want to get it right. want to leave it, we want to get it right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Madam Manager.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to thank the team from, from MassDOT for the presentation and the hard work. We, we know it really has come a long way, and several million dollars have been put into this for the design process that has been ongoing. It is complicated, but we will, we will certainly provide the council with all the updates, including what was given tonight. And then, at the appropriate time, when you've had your next meetings, if there's been changes, we'll invite you back to update the council if that's agreeable.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Looks like we're good on this. We still have executive session tonight, so we'll move on. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting if you'd like. Motion response, Riverwalk improvement for projects. Counselor Drinkwater, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm glad that this motion response could occur on a night where we're already recognizing the many achievements of Diane Trad, who was the author of this motion response, and it highlights actually a number of different ongoing projects along, along the Riverwalk that are, you know, making progress, and, and many of them are near completion. So, overall, a very positive report in, in terms of projects on, you know, throughout the, the Riverwalk on, on both sides. I did want to highlight the, the last project listed in the, in the report, which is the Centerville River Path. When I had originally put this motion forward, it was in response to an inquiry from a resident who was just wondering about the progress of what was going on in the area of the, the Riverwalk on the, the north side of the river, in the area of the, you know, Bridge Street and the Aiken Street Bridges. And as it turns out, I was, you know, enthused to learn there's a lot of activity there coming from, you know, community involvement, a lot of volunteer work, DIY Lowell is involved in, in actually working to bring in some funding, grant funding, to make continual improvements to the, the stretch of, of Riverwalk between the, the two bridges on, on Aiken Street and Bridge Street. So, I think that's a great area to focus on, it's really great to see that there's sort of public-private partnership already happening, and I think it's a really underutilized part of the, the Riverwalk, you know, right, right now, that could be much more utilized with some improvements. So, glad to see that, that continuing there, and if there's any way, I think going forward for the, the city or the, the state to be able to support the community's efforts for that, that Centerville River Path, I hope we can get involved and, and do that. So, overall, you know, great report on, on a number of different exciting projects along the, the Riverwalk that I think will improve the quality of, of life. And once again, a testament to the work of Diane Trad and the, and the DPD to get these projects moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Next response, hockey enforcement during the snowstorms. Counselor Chow, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Superintendent Kelly Richardson for this concise report coming back. I thank you, Chief, and the Police Department for responding to this motion, and also to the DPW for working very hard for the past three, four snowstorms that we had, one right after the other. And, you know, the motion is, is to address the general concern or the distress about the residents throughout the city when you have a lot of snow on the roads and plow become issue and, you know, issue with moving traffic and so forth. And we use one street as example, Florence Avenue, on that particular street, just because you have a mixed use, you have single, traditional, simple family, and you have multifamily, and then, in many neighborhoods, you have that mixed use, and you have a lot of vehicles, a property on the street, and it makes it more complicated to move the vehicles when you have a big snowstorm. And I know that the Police Department is working very diligently to be respectful to a city like our city, it's a very, it's an urban city, it's a very dense city, and try to make sure that the streets are safe. So, this, this motion really addressed that issue in a very respectful way. We're not just, I was just to tell people, we want to make sure that where necessary, respectfully, we knock on the doors and let the tenants know or the residents know to move the vehicles, if that can be solved. That being said, I, I know that you have a tough job on you, Chief, and I see that you're here, and I don't know if you want to say a few words about this issue.
Do I have to, Richardson?
Yeah, I'll be quick. Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Counselor. Obviously, this is a challenge for us, everyone this season, over the last thirty-two, thirty-three years that I've been here. People get mad when we tow, and people get mad when we don't tow. So, we try to find that balance. Obviously, our number one priority is to make sure the streets are passable, and we work with the DPW, if they determine that they can't get down the street and plow, then we would go there and tow the cars. But I know the last, the storm before the last one, the officers were actually getting out and knocking on doors, because the last thing we want to do during COVID-19 with people out of work and stuff like that is creating hardships for people. So, it's that balance once again. So, and people were very cooperative, they come out and moved them. And then the one people that didn't, we followed up a couple days later, and if the cars weren't moved after seventy-two hours, we basically tagged and towed them because we need to keep the, the streets open. I think seventy-two is, seventy-two hours is more than enough time to get your vehicle off the street. So, this is how we've been doing it here for years, and we'll continue. And I know, not going to make everybody happy every day, but, you know, we continue to do our job. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I just want to reiterate that key word right there, balance, and you've done a wonderful job, Chief, on the Police Department, and also Sean Forsey at the neighborhood here at the City Manager's Office. I know that you always receive calls from residents, if there's any major issue, and you always respond to that in a, in a very, very quick manner. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion response, letter regarding vaccinations for school staff. Council Elliot, any comments?
No, I think the, the letter really hit all the important points, and glad that the council took the vote to support moving teachers up, especially in light of today's announcement from the governor regarding schools. So, I think it'll be important that, that this is followed to at the state level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the letter, Madam Manager. Do I need a motion to accept and place on?
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Counsel Mercy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate that letter, it was well put together, and of course, we need to get our teachers with the shot, it's very important. And I know that on this memo, it said, following the vaccinations, as the frontline providers got, the senior citizens got, and I'm very grateful for that, and I know Joanne Keegan is doing an excellent job. But I think that there's a group of people who need to be serviced, and those are our seniors, some of whom have not embraced modern technology, and they do not have computers, and those that do have computers, they're not familiar on how to do the necessary steps to register for the shot. So, I want to know, what steps are we taking to help those vulnerable people, people recovering from operations, disabled, homebound, people who need rides to get the, to the shot site? Are we doing enough? Who do we call for assistance? Is it possible maybe LTC can have a demonstration on how to do, register with the necessary steps? I know you called that phone number, it tells you to do this, that, that, that. I think sometimes people need, I put myself in that position, I'm not so good with computers myself, so I, I think that other people are not either, so that's what I'm asking. So, if we could have some answers as to what next step do we take, and when do we anticipate people would get rides to the, to the shot site? What do we do to help people with the computers? There's a lot of things that are still unanswered, and I'm not trying to delay the shots that are so necessary for teachers, but I, I have to speak up for the seniors because I'm there myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, there is a, a lot going on in this regard, and we can get a full updated report for, for the council. You know, so a couple of points. One, we have our employees who are calling outreach to seniors through the Senior Center, trying to find out what people need, and especially if people need help with technology. In fact, some of our employees are, are working with the seniors to register them when there is available vaccine, also to determine if there's a need for transportation and the like. There's, we also are one of the twenty communities that the state has designated for extra help and resources to reach those hard, to reach people, whether it's seniors or, or people who are homebound or bed, you know, ridden and need help. We actually had our first organizational meeting today, so we're working with the state on other outreach alternatives to try and reach as many people in our community. And so, we can get, that's ongoing. As I said, we had the first meeting with the state today about what efforts and what supports they will provide the city of Lowell in that regard. And then, the other thing I just wanted to point out is, right now, there's still a problem with enough vaccine, both on a, at the Senior Center as well as the Lowell General Site. That's happening everywhere, and, and I was on several calls today with the Lieutenant Governor, I know the Governor spoke about it this afternoon. The main thing is that we're standing up the, the infrastructure necessary so that when there is more vaccine available, we will be able to, we will have the people on the list that we know that need to be reached. So, there's the effort around mobile, locate, mobile units that can go to homes to provide the vaccine to people. We're gathering that information so that we have the, a list of those people when we do have the vaccine available, that we can make, make those types of calls. So, all of the people, the seniors, the over sixty-five, the people with two comorbidities who are all eligible right now, there are in that group people who, who can't get out, who can't travel. And so, we are focusing our attention on trying to reach them as well. There's also another group that's eligible now, and those are people who live in affordable housing, whether it's Lowell Housing Authority properties, as well as employees, all of that group is eligible now as well. And we've been working, and Joanne Keegan and, and her team are working with the Housing Authority to have clinics when we have available vaccine, both for residents as well as for employee, employees of the Housing Authority. So, but we'll get all of that as an updated report for the council. These things are changing almost daily, but there's a lot that is happening around that. In the meantime, if there are seniors who are listening, or someone who's in that group right now who's eligible, and they don't have either a computer or they don't have vaccine, they can call the Senior Center, they can call my office, and we'll make sure that we, we take care of what they need to know and, and how they need to know it. So, I mean, right now, the, as I said, there is a, a shortage of vaccine, but that could change, and, and we're told it could change within a month and the weeks to come, so we want to make sure people, you know, are contacted and know that they can be, how they will get the vaccine when it's available.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Newn?
Mr. Mayor, I know that it's not, we're not on this one, but anyhow, I thank Counsel Mercy for expand on it. I, I know that the manager office have done a lot of work around outreach to senior. I, maybe I want to ask Madam Managers to expand on a little bit, because I know that not only technology barrier, but also language barrier. I know your office is working to try to get the language to help seniors that is eligible for, and just to speak English and have difficulty registers and, and, and need help in doing so, and, and, and kind of direct them to the right place, and maybe help assist them as best as they can speak on a number of, of language that you, your office employ right now to, to help senior that is eligible for Phase Two right now. Please, thank you.
So, we are, there, there's a few things in that regard. We, we have, we are using, again, translator to help people who are calling, whether they speak English, Camar, Spanish, or Portuguese. We're also working on, with the state as well as locally, to have informational writings available for people in their languages, in, in those four languages as well. I also, which I'll mention it now, I'll mention it at the end, but we are also doing a teletown hall this Thursday night, and that is for people sixty-five and older. And that call will feature local experts, Dr. Adam Weston, an infectious disease physician from Lowell General, Beth Hale from the Lowell Community Health Center, Joanne Keegan from the Health Department. And this is going to provide people sixty-five and over with an overview of the vaccine distribution efforts locally, and allow people to ask questions. So, what's going to happen is households that have members sixty-five or older are going to get a call inviting them to participate in the town hall, and that they can stay on the line. If people, this is going to be in multiple languages, so they will be able to push a button and get it translated for them in real time. So, whether it's Camar or Spanish, they can just stay on the line if it's English. So, you know, the, the event will be translated, as I said, and people will be able, they will be called automatically. But if someone wants to call and join in, we have that information, that dial-in information, how they would be able to join in, even if they weren't, they just wanted to hear or be, or participate. So, I'll repeat this again at the end of the meeting, but this is happening on Thursday evening at six oh five this week. So, and, and again, the idea is to try and get as much information to the community. Right now, we're focusing on sixty-five and older, that if they have questions, first of all, to, to explain to them what, what is going on. And, and as I said, Dr. Weston, who's working, you know, with Lowell General on this, will be speaking to their efforts. The Community Health Center is going to be on it, as well as our own health expert, Joanne Keegan.
Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Newn, second by Counsel Mercy. Five-three, communication, reappoint Susan Frischett, need a motion to adopt, sorry, reappoint her to the Hall Memorial Library Board of Trustees for a term which expires in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Some moves.
Counsel Newn, Mercy, second by Counsel Newn. Roll call. Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Newn?
Yes.
Counsel Roach?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Thank you. Six-one, ordinance to amend Chapter twenty-eight entitled Wetlands, they'd most refer a public hearing on March ninth, twenty twenty-one at seven P.M. by Counselor Samaras, second by Counsel Drinkwater. Report Subcommittee is pending. Want to go over the Auditor Clerk Personnel Subcommittee on February sixteenth?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel. Yes. Present at that meeting were the members of the Subcommittee, Counsel Newn and Counsel Conway, but actually, all members of the council were present, Counsel Drinkwater, Counsel Mercy, Counsel Roach, Counsel Leahy, Mayor Leahy, Counsel Chow, and Counsel Elliot. And also, present was Counsel, was Director of Human Relations, Mary Calery. Mary Calery reviewed the qualification requirements. There was a question that was raised- There was a question that was raised as to requiring a CPA in the qualification of the job description. It was agreed that we would keep what was in the previous job postings, that CPA position would be, CPA as a good would be preferred. And Mary spoke on how she would post positions using professional organizations to advertise this particular position. But during the discussion, a question was brought up regarding posting the ads in the Boston Globe. And it was discussed that the ads would cost over $3,000. The idea of using the paper and the cost of the ads was discussed at, at length. General consensus came out that we did not feel that costs would be of value based on previous results from other postings. Those agreed that we, at this point, that we would not advertise in the Boston Globe. It was agreed that the position would be posted 30 days and using professional organizations to post a position. During the discussion, Counselor Rook also suggested that if after 30 days, we don't get acceptable candidates, that we would consider using a search firm for this. So that was just left up as a point for discussion if all else failed. Regarding salary, it was discussed that we would go to Level 1 on the grid. And so as a result of the meeting, Mr. Mayor, we came out with two motions for the council to approve. And that would be a motion that the salary range be posted at Level 1 on the grid. And the second motion that we would post a position for 30 days. I guess, Mr. Mayor, I need a motion to accept the motions and the report as a report of progress.
Yes, thank you. Any discussion, motion to accept the motions and as a report of progress by Counselor Samaras, seconded by Counselor Rook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Finance Subcommittee, Joint Subcommittee with School Committee, Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following suit on motions that have been made to have joint, to continue to have joint subcommittees of both the School Committee and Finance. We met this evening. A brief recap, I, I thought it was a very productive meeting with the intent of information sharing on status of both the city FY20, 21 closeout, where we are with revenues and expenditures, we maintain to be on target with, with our budget estimate. And on the school side, Billy Joe Turner provided a presentation which has been forwarded to members of the city council. I thought the PowerPoint presentation laid out the current status of funding for FY20, excuse me, FY21, as well as anticipated revenue for FY22, along with one of the motions that was referred to by the council on the status of the heirs money, both 1 and 2, which is federal funding for education support. So, long story short, there's a, the school department has a 10.6 surplus, $10.6 million surplus this fiscal year. They laid out plans for those funds, which have to be extended by June 30th. There's a facilities, School Committee, Facility Subcommittee meeting this coming Thursday at 5:30. Is that correct, Mr. Baldwin? Is it 5:30? I notice this Thursday.
Yeah, that's right.
It is, okay. In which they will lay out a plan to use some of the funding. Naturally, it's, we're about to enter March and the time that it takes to, to scope out projects and publicly bid them and complete them and spend the money by June 30th this time. But they're going to lay out a plan relative to some of that funding. Secondly, so, I mean, that's, that's really a recap of, of the meeting that we did discuss, which I thought was very important, the use of heirs, heirs money, particularly the 17.9 million that has been awarded to the city and, and/or the schools. And in large part, there's a pretty detailed plan that was laid out by the School Committee relative to allocating resources for any learning loss that has taken place as a result of the remote, remote learning or hybrid form of education, really remote learning. So I, I thought that was an important element. They made out a plan for 23.4 million that'll be used in support of whether it's summer schools or additional learning opportunities for, for the entire school system. So that's really the primary focus of, of that money, which is that's the intended, intended use from the federal government. So I think it would be important, maybe the school department did put up that, that presentation or at least two or three of the graphs are outlines, particularly when it comes to the heirs money and what that is going to be focused and targeted for, particularly for parents who, you know, would like to see what opportunities are available to close that gap for those students that have, have learning loss. And that's why the initiative is, is categorized as such. So I think it's a, it's an important component of the education. I think it'll reassure, reassure parents that the school, the School Committee, the school administration recognizes that there has been loss a little last year as a result of remote learning. And these are the programs that are going to be run, whether it's an extended school program or, again, there's, there's quite a long list of funding options to bridge that gap. So we're going to stop there. It was, it was a productive meeting. I appreciated the plans that the school department have put in place for those three pots of money. Looking forward in the explanation on some of the costs that, you know, that the school department had to absorb for the lost students. There was a lot, there was a lot on that meeting. And if any member of the public would like those presentations, I think they should be, you know, they are available. We'd be happy to post them up because a lot of information that, that was provided. So that's a report of progress, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I need a motion to accept and place on file as a report of progress by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Noon.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
We combined 7.2 to 7.6.
That was, that's.
That's, that's Rita. I second it.
Yeah, thank you.
Combine, need a motion to bundle 7.2 to 7.6 and adopt and accept the wire inspectors accompanying order. So, roll call. Oh, and then I go, yeah. Who's doing the motion? Yeah, yeah. Counselor Mercia, seconded by Counselor Noon, 7.2. Okay. All right, roll call.
No need for roll.
No roll call? Yeah, okay. All done. Petition, we need, we have claims, three property damages. Need a motion to refer a law department for reporting recommendation by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Rook. City Council Motion. First motion of the night, Counselor Mercia requests city manager to have transportation engineer install a handicap parking sign at the corner of 7th and Methuen Street per request of a disabled veteran, seconded by Counselor Chow. Counselor Mercia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion does speak for itself, but I want to completely stress that although the person lives at 42 7th Street, they, the side of the property, which is on Methuen Street, that's where they need the sign on the side of their property. Is, can we stress that? Because it looks like because he lives at, because she lives at 42 7th Street, I understand that, but she needs it on the other side, which would be the Methuen Street side. And if I might just add this, I understand that I'm making this motion in this snow like four feet and the different curbs and stuff, but I know that when it all clears, we'll get it there, you see? So I, I know that you can't do that now. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Motion 9-2, Counselor Elliott, requests city manager to provide a report regarding the reorganization and streamlining Department of Inspeccional Services from Department of Planning and Development, seconded by Counselor Rook. Counselor Elliott.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to speak much unless I think the, the motion does speak for itself. You know, it was back in 2011, I believe, that we consolidated many parts of city government that were sort of standalones and it seemed to make, make some sense. I just feel after a number of years, code enforcement, building department, health department should just be under one umbrella. If you look, if you go to the city's website, there are so many organizations. And, and I understand and it's explained on the website that it was supposed to be a one-stop shopping, if you will, for perhaps developers. But I, I just feel, I've looked at many communities, there is a Department of Inspection, other inspectional services or building department or code enforcement. And to me, that's, that just seems to make more sense than, right now you have building inspectors reporting to the commissioner, reporting to the director of inspectional services, reporting to the director of planning and development. It just seems to be a multi-layer bureaucracy that to me would, would be served better by just code enforcement, inspectional services, building and health, and then others, you know, land use and conservation commission and so many other departments that naturally should fall under planning and development. I just think code enforcement, inspectional services is, should be standalone and would serve the public better, I think. So that's, I'm speaking more than I would. I'll look forward to the report when it, when it comes back.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next, we have a city council executive session, executive session pursuant to exception.
Mr. Mayor. Could I just make a quick announcement before you go to executive session? Thank you. As I just said, there will be a Teletown Hall this Thursday evening at 6:05. People will get a call tomorrow night telling them that they should expect a call on Thursday and stay on the line and they can push the button, they'll be instructed for language. If someone is interested in joining it, the call and doesn't get a call, they can dial in. We'll put this on the website, but they can dial in by dialing 877-229-8493. And then they'll be asked to enter a PIN, 120537. But otherwise, people will be called and they stay on the line and they will hear the presentation. It will be an hour from our local experts talking about the vaccine and answering questions. So it's the first of a Teletown Hall and this is for the population of 65 and older. The other announcement, Mr. Mayor, that I want to make is beginning next Monday, March 1st, city hall will be open regular hours to the public. As you know, for the past several weeks, based on the, the infection rate in the city, we had been offering city services remotely. But we will be opening for at full-time regular hours. We'll ask people to continue to mask, wear face covering, social distance, of course. Employees will be socially distanced as well as with, with proper protection and barriers. But we would encourage, I, I will say that people were able to access online services over the, on and off over this past year. We're doing a lot more of that than we had. So people should feel free to, to continue to access online services as they have been before. All of those will be available, so.
Thank you. Counselor Mercy, have a question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that announcement that city hall will open next week full-time, would it be possible that this council and the next city council meeting will come in person?
So we're hoping, there's a lot of work going on with the installation of the new equipment and cameras. I spoke to them today. They know they have a deadline of, or they're trying to work to the deadline of March 8th. So if all goes well, Counselor, that's the plan.
Okay.
We'll keep you posted.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah, too. It was going to be, I'd do a little bit of training as well before.
Yeah, it's new equipment, so the LTC as well as the mayor have to get trained. Everybody will have to get trained on this new equipment. But, but it will, we'll, we'll see when they finish council. That, that's the goal was to have the equipment up and operating for the March 9th meeting. We may or may not make it depending on, there's a lot of technology going on. As well as for the mayor's reception room, cameras have been installed there as well, so.
That's all right. Thank you, Madam Manager. If we could just be notified one way or another, that's fine. And lastly, I have a thing, I have an announcement that Lowell High School football practice started this Monday. I hope that, and I wish everybody does a great job this season, not only football, but all the sports as well that started up again. Good luck to all the people in the sports. Have a good season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Your announcements. Counselor Rook.
Yeah, real quick one. The next two nights, Wednesday and Thursday, the city is completing their parking study and, you know, talking to different neighborhoods and so forth. Tomorrow night is Petecaville and Centerville and that's a 6:30. I know it's a Zoom presentation or a Zoom meeting. And then the 25th, it's back central, the acre and the Highlands. I know, Madam Manager, that the Zoom links are on the, on the city's website page and I'm sure that the neighborhood groups have them as well. I just want to remind that tomorrow night is Petecaville, Centerville and then Thursday night would be back central, acre and the Highlands. And then real quick, Mr. Mayor, lastly, following Counselor Mercia's point, just want to thank the manager, Karikif and Fisher Clancy for working very hard this weekend for getting the field and the track over at Carley Stadium cleared of all the snow. I, I know it's, it built up a lot over the past few weeks, but, you know, both girls and boys track in the football team were able to practice the, starting yesterday and today. And some people reached out to me, Madam Manager, and asked me to express their thanks to you and, and the staff for, for getting that done and getting the season started on time. So thank you.
And special thanks to Shannon Cohen and his team. I never knew you had, to have a rubber blade to file that field, but you learn something every day.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go to executive session pursuant to exemption 10 for the purpose of considering a land swap agreement on property in the Hampton Canal Innovation District, of which public discussion may have a detrimental effect on the city's bargaining position. So, and we're going to go into executive session, we're going to adjourn from executive session.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Mayor, just, those are going to be going into the executive session. Stay on the link, please. Don't get off the link. We're going to use the same link and we're just going to filter people that probably take a session off it. So don't, don't, don't disconnect. Stay on the same link. Thank you.
Okay, so I need a motion to go into executive session by Counselor Rook, seconded by Counselor.